Do you resent the Stone's home where you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state? And would you be able to discharge the duties of the office of President for the county, the Preston County Commission, the State Bureau of County County Commission meeting held only in front of the board to test your skill and judgment to help you guide.
I will. At this time, I will call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today is April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Stone are present. Commissioner John Smith is away at a county commission association board meeting as he serves on that board. He's out of town for today. Do we have anyone from the public to be recognized that is not on the agenda? Take a review of the bills, please.
Is it time when we can pay the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed?
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to pay the bills that have been properly presented and approved. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Assessor's office, we do have some tax corrections. Good morning.
Good morning. We have two exonerations for five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
Five sixty-nine seventy-four.
Okay, at this time, I need to approve the assessor's office tax correction list in the amount of five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction list that has been presented by the assessor's office in the amount of five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that brings us to our first appointment. We have Dwayne Hamilton with our O M nine-one-one employee hire.
Today, you allow us to hire Brandy Gloucester. Brandy, again, was a previous employee, lots of other good terms and everything. She is from Hurricane Wood. This position would be for regular or part-time, which means she can't get up to, in her four-year, she's just not here to teach. Rate of pay would be seventeen dollars an hour, sort of, yeah, with benefits.
How did you classify her?
She is a regular part-time.
Do you have an original that I need to sign, please?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. At this time, I need to approve the hire of Brandy Gloucester as a regular, part-time, nine-one-one public safety dispatcher for Preston County E nine-one, E nine-one-one, effective immediately. Her rate of pay will be seventeen an hour with benefits.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the hire of Ms. Brandy Gloucester for the E nine-one-one regular part-time position as a public safety dispatcher, effective immediately. Seventeen dollars an hour with benefits. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Hire her still, we're short. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to, and I think we might be on time, our nine thirty-five appointment. We have Cam Thomas from the county ambulance with an emergency funding request for South Station.
Actually, Sean has got to speak.
Good morning, Sean.
Good morning, Sean.
I don't mumble people's too much that much.
We all mumble through it.
So as you all know, in two thousand twenty-one, Camp added a second station to the southern end of the county. We initially started in Newburgh, which could not have been started without the town of Newburgh and the senior senator helping us with that. In the late summer, early fall of twenty-one, Fellasville Volunteer Fire Department purchased the old Mount Neary ambulance building and graciously allowed Camp to call that our home for our South Station. We make no profit from having that station out there. When we made the decision to add a second station, it was simply to provide the community with a better, faster response time. We knew going into that we we wasn't gonna make money from having a second station. I do have a breakdown for you guys of what it has cost Camp since early twenty-one to have the South Station. That does not include the cost of ambulance supplies because we would have been approaching those, purchasing those regardless of where the station was located. It also does not include the salaries for additional personnel, extra strictly utilities, maintenance, that kind of stuff. So that brings me to why we're here today. We've had multiple issues with the HVAC system at the South Station for about a year and a half now. We've had to have the AC unit recharged multiple times during the summer months. The furnace has been fixed three times just since the beginning of this year. Early Friday morning, it quit working again. We did have a crew down there. The temperature dropped down to fifty-four degrees in the building with that crew there. We were able to, at that time, get Snyder Heating and Cooling to come out for an emergency visit. Multiple issues were found. It was found that the cold air, cold return ductwork is much smaller than it should be, which is causing the furnace to overheat and not producing the heat. It was also found that there's no fillers anywhere in the furnace, which has caused, caused a lot of dirt debris to get into all the working parts. There is also some black residue on the heating vents. He was unsure if that is dirt, dust, carbon monoxide residue. It's hard to determine, but either way, it should not be there. There was also a safety switch that had been bypassed, which would have shut the furnace off. It then overheated. Because that was bypassed, that furnace just continued to run for hours at a time. He was able to get it working Friday. It didn't last very long. Early Sunday morning, we had a crew down there. I believe it dropped down to the low forties. Was able to get somebody out there to get it up and running. It went out again yesterday morning. Right now, when it's put on emergency heat to run the propane, it doesn't even kick on. We are slowly running off of the heat pump, which right now is fine thanks to the temperatures being a little warmer. And it would drop down to, you know, the thirties or something. That's not gonna supply enough heat. So it was recommended that, and all of this was neglected way before the fire department ever purchased this building. That unit was put in in two thousand eleven. So for ten years before we moved in or the fire department took possession of that building, it had been neglected. So it was recommended to replace the whole system, get everything up to code, which brings in, the new unit comes in at eleven thousand six hundred dollars with an additional seven hundred and fifty dollars to replace the vents, bringing that total to twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And I do have the estimate there. Because we do have crews down there on a regular basis, we didn't have, this wasn't something we could push back till, you know, next week or next month. It had to be, it has to be fixed. So we did sign the quote contract, however you want to word it, with Snyder Heating and Cooling last night to get this furnace replaced, which will be done later this week, possibly tomorrow, possibly Thursday sometime this week. He's putting that in because our crews, one, they have to be safe. We have to have the proper working equipment. We can't ask them to sit down there with no heat, no AC depending on what month we're in. To add on to that, it was also found that the gas line where the propane comes from the tank into the building has been hit. I don't know if it was done in a loma or weed or it's, there's a plastic coating over the copper line that is off as well as a kink in that copper line. So that's another huge safety issue. I do have a call into Woodford Oil to see about them coming out to get an estimate for that. They haven't got back with me. I just called them yesterday. It was also suggested that there could be a propane leak somewhere underground. He did check the furnace. There was no evidence of propane leaking in the furnace just due to the amount that we have spent on propane. We have had propane filled twice since the beginning of the year. It was filled, actually, was it January? Yes. It was filled December twenty-eighth. And, or, it was actually filled, sorry, January eleventh. No, I'm sorry.
It's not that big. I mean, it's not a lot of scratches or scrapes, but it's just a one May and, of course, the bay area. But the horror factor, trust me, that was the one there Saturday night and Tuesday, the furnace quit and dropped.
My apologies. It was filled December twenty-eighth. We paid it on January eleventh. It was also filled, or we paid on February seventh, and then again on March twenty-first. And this, since we have been in the building, this is a breakdown with copies of all the invoices where we have had to get propane. So we're spending a lot, a lot of money just on propane itself. So we're hoping to, this week, figure out exactly what is going on with that. So we're here today, you know, to see if the commission would be able to help with anything towards this, you know, if half of it, that's great. All of it, that's great. A fourth of it, that's great. Regardless, you know, we're, we're happy to pay to get this in. So we're just, if there's any, any help, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Why just have, do you have something?
Yeah, I'll, I'd just like to add to, the fire department, to get that building up for us, it already puts several thousand dollars into washer, dryer, flood protection, some other things. So I'd like to say that, try to help out, help. But, and along with this, we first, attempting to cover the center button to get that, of course, it's elevated first would be hurt, you know, to get a new building through FEMA. That building may have to be, for that furnace, if we use it to new buildings as well. So, you know, I think we also have trouble with the air conditioning, about the same problem as the heating or the solar.
And we did have a quote just to fix the existing problem, which came in about five thousand, but that did not include fixing the AC. We've had a few people tell us that there is a a freon leak. I don't know if I'm saying that correct. So, and they are very hard to find. And we were also advised that at some point, it's gonna be hard to even get freon to continue to recharge that if we, you know, want it to, whether that's a year from now or two years.
I, I do have just a couple of questions because a lot of the time when we're asked for funding like this, we don't know what has happened or what's been going on leading up to those things. So my first question is, is when did you guys exactly transfer from the Newburgh area to Fellasville?
September of twenty-one.
And was it not working out at Newburgh?
It was a better setup in, in that Mount Neary building obviously was already set up for an ambulance. We were able to have the crew and the truck in the same building. At Newburgh, we had the truck stationed in our city hall, and then the crews were at the senior center, so they would have to walk outside to get to the truck. And we were worried about, you know, ice, somebody falling. And at that point, we had had a few employees, including myself, that had fallen on ice and broke some bones. So we wanted to be able to make it a lot easier.
Was there anything done as far as the building goes? Was there any sort of inspection going before you guys, before you went into that building at Fellasville to make sure that everything was good? You're just using it? They're not charging you anything to use it?
They are not charging.
It's just like a, a name card?
The fire department would give them the building
Awesome.
just so there would be coverage in areas which rather than, you, those big ones, areas that, without that station, will wait anywhere from forty to fifty minutes for it to get.
And you guys are down there twenty-four seven? You have someone in that station twenty-four seven?
We are on it. I will say it's twenty-four seven. Mondays, we have a crew there for sixteen hours. Tuesdays, typically, there's, at least every other Tuesday, there's a crew there twenty-four hours, starting actually this month, or will be a crew twenty-four hours on Wednesday, sixteen hours on Thursday, and then Dwayne is down there usually Friday through Sunday. So there's some days where there's not twenty-four coverage, but we have drastically increased what you're working towards.
Yes. And we're working towards a contract that, I'm assuming you guys are wanting to take on that area within a contractual agreement with the county, correct? Okay.
What, what percentage of current calls coming out of that area? From two thousand twenty-one?
Part of the thing is just that, because it actually had, it shares with the hospital transports.
Okay.
You know, if there's an overload, then that ends the difficulty, or, where, I would, or, because, you know, there's issues with that too, but, so, I mean, it's used all over, but, I mean, for that area, primarily, you know, it's.
It's important to have coverage in those outlying areas, and I, I am thankful that our, that you guys have stepped up to cover that and are working on the, you know, having the staff to, to take care of that as well.
As far as money, Samantha, it's, it's, you know, there's no nursing home, there's no, you know, at the, into the county that there's not a lot of resources to actually make a lot of money, or make money to recover your costs.
You have to have that covered.
No, you have to be ready to respond. And so my last question is, and I'm just doing my due diligence, I'm not trying to drill you or anything there. But you show all of the expenses out of that station, but what have you been able to bill and recoup to offset the expenses at the South Station? Just any idea there? I'm just curious.
I wouldn't have the idea. I could have our billing company break it down if they can. You know, it's, it's gonna be kind of hard to do that because.
I understand, I understand. You guys typically tell us it's like a sixty-fourty. You bill for one hundred percent, you usually get around sixty percent of them.
The South, Chris.
It's just not as. I mean, because regardless of whether we can recoup every dime that we stick into the southern tier of the county, we've got to have the coverage. And so I, I don't have, on an emergency, you can't come back and say, we need twelve thousand every month. But I do not.
I don't think we, I don't think we have an issue. I don't have an issue personally. We're gonna have to do our due diligence since we're close to the end of fiscal year to see
Yeah, I'll have to look.
where we could pull money from and what amount. Plus, I would like, Commissioner Smith, if you have, say, the final decision.
You guys have already started to get this corrected.
Yes, it's already in the works to get fixed this week.
If you could give us till next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. And then Snyder Heating and Cooling is a local Preston County company. Appreciate you guys doing that. That, that means a lot, so, I mean, it's definitely.
And we have a, we have a copy of the quote.
Yes.
That's ours, correct?
Yes, that is.
That's my next one.
Once again, like, I do wanna say, you know, how much we do appreciate you guys listening to us, the fire department for allowing us to have this building, and like Dwayne said, like, they have, they have sunk a lot of money into it already, helping us, so.
Well, I, I've always thought it makes sense that in those areas, when we are heating and cooling and, you know, the county doesn't do that for fire departments. They have their own stuff and their own structure, but it just makes sense that fire EMS cooperate and work together. And then, you know, if they build new buildings, that they would maybe have a bay for a truck in these outlined areas. It makes sense because then when funding is coming in from the county by levy or whatever it is, then everybody's benefiting, including a service in the county.
They have been absolutely wonderful to us and wonderful to work with.
Perfect. We will go through.
Where is that building located?
It's right beside the fire department, but here, that's what I was gonna bring. If you choose to do this, I can actually show that, that any kind contribution for that furnace that could go into the new building. Because I'm working with FEMA because it is a critical infrastructure. I mean, it's feet away from the creeks, so, and it's kind of, it's been plugged numerous times with ore. So they are interested, I'm working with FEMA right now, trying to get something done. Fire departments are agreeing to tear it up, because if they get the new building built up there, we have an individual, they're making ground. It's a, they're making ground. One thing we're waiting on is the cost. That's not on the building that I created for with FEMA. But they would demolish that old building once it's done.
And the building would remain the fire, it would be the same agreement, just a different location. The building would still be owned by the fire department, so they wouldn't lose their investment.
If you guys have a copy of that MOU with the Fellasville Fire Department to utilize that building, and if you don't, get one, I'll take it here.
There's one, they signed, they have a law.
And then just make sure we have a copy of it.
Yeah, there's, you know, we draw the.
Body turn.
Body turn.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we will move along to approve our minutes, and we've got the list. Do you have some?
Yeah. At this time, I need to approve the minutes for our March eighteenth fiscal year, twenty twenty-five, our session, our March nineteenth regular meeting, March twentieth special session, budget workshop, and March twenty-sixth regular.
I will second that. So it properly moved in, seconded to approve the minutes as stated. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right, on to our state settlement list.
At this time, I need to approve the state settlement list for March twenty-fifth through March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, for Kale and Wills.
That is Wills, correct, Deeley? Okay. I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlement list, March twenty-fifth through March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, for Kale, Kale and Wills. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. PIBs.
At this time, I need to dispense with the readings and open court session and the proceedings of the clerk of this commission had for March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, through April third, two thousand twenty-four.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings, the proceedings in vacation and open court session, and enter them into record for March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, through April third, two thousand twenty-four. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Brings us to our old business. We have Sheriff Crit here with an update on the financial statements. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Good morning. I guess the update I can give you today is that we're working, or she is working on all the credit card transactions, which wants credit card transactions. Hopefully, when that's completed, it's all done.
That's wonderful.
Is what I've been told.
Okay.
So, so we're caught up on Board of Health and the.
Board of Health, they had like a discrepancy, I think it was like a couple thousand dollars, so we've got it down to like sixty dollars.
Okay, okay. So completion rate of all the, the back stuff is, what, eighty percent?
I would have.
Okay.
That, that's good.
I guess this is what some of these issues are, if you made, excuse me, if you made a credit card payment, it went to the bank, it's shared with the bank. The money's there, it's in the bank, but it's not, it's not showing in any. So she's just chasing all these.
And then we should be able to get monthly financial reports once it's all done?
It should be.
Okay. Am I on track for the year-end settlement?
As far as I know, yes. Everything, everything is way better than was this month. Way better than was.
Well, hopefully, no messes will have to be cleaned up from a whole world.
I don't think so. I guess when you get down to these, you get hundreds and hundreds of thousands of transactions. You gotta chase all these figures.
All right, thank you, and Melissa, thank you, and we look forward to your report next week.
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you.
You said next week.
Yes. Just then, Melissa. Okay, then we will just, whatever day you're here, update Nate, he can update us.
Just email.
Just let Nate know, and he can update us at our meetings.
What would you mean?
Now, what the report is.
Just an update through email, go to.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
All right, next up, we have other new business, county property proposal, and that is me. So some of you that's been in our meetings know that I've been working on a plan, attending the county fire association meetings. The county got a letter back from the fire association with their intention of what they'd like to do with the funding from legislature that was awarded to them, and they have since put that funding into a CD to earn some interest while we work through some things. Back in two thousand ten, the county did a master plan on our properties over at the, where the nine-one-one center is located, and part of that master plan in two thousand ten had a burn facility and on the backside of the nine-one-one. Well, at that time, the fire association really didn't like the plot of land because of how steep it was and how much it was gonna cost to excavate it and some other reasons. But I went over, been looking at the land, went and presented a plot that I thought would be feasible to the fire association, went the next day after that, on the Friday after the fire association meeting, and we actually physically walked the property down there, and they took a look at it, and it does, it is satisfactory with the fire association. It's still remotely in the, the same vicinity, but it's just up a little bit further. It lies in an area, and I have some photographs here. It's literally, if you bypass the nine-one-one center on the right-hand side of the road, there's the building that Dwayne holds our equipment in for nine-one-one, and then it's the next plot. That road just extends down to great big towers down there in that field. It's not ideal property for developing or anything like that. Those towers being located on that land down there really limit what you could really do down there, but for a burn facility, training facility for our firemen across the county, it really makes sense. And so Commissioner Smith is not here this week, and I am still working through, there's a four-inch gas line that goes down through there and a six-inch water line, which would make for the utilities needed to sustain that. It's my understanding with this burn facility that you fuel a fire, if you're burning a building to put out with propane, not natural gas, but natural gas is there in the event that they expand upon their training facility there, if they would ever need the natural gas.
They can use the national, natural gas to actually create the heat and environment in the building.
Correct.
But with propane, they actually train and putting out propane?
Correct, correct. And so the way that land lays and the way that they could put a facility in there on that plot of land would really lend to several different types of training. It could be training for not only fire, but EMS assisting on rough terrain, transporting, getting people out of the woods and down, you know, because there's rocks and there's cliff down the backside of that. So it could really just be an awesome training facility for our firemen if we move forward. They did have a rough quote, just, and this is all very early, but they did have a rough quote of around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to erect this burn building, what you would call burn building. And so with the money that's come in and the additional funding that's coming from legislature, they're like over two-thirds of the way to having the funding to actually build this building. So they're on a very good track there. So a couple of other things.
Is this parcel already, or is it off?
It, it's not. But that, what he did is Dwayne outlined what was left, the county batteries down in there. And there's a topical that shows the elevation.
Yeah, I couldn't get the, you have to zoom the map in. It shows kind of the elevations there. If I zoomed out, it would show you the whole plot. Shows the twenty.
So the burner building would be on the top side.
It would be.
Be almost right below the garage.
Yeah.
And the way that valley lays down in there, it, it was, and the way the wind blows up there, everything would go on down.
Well, that puts it as far away from the public as it possibly can.
And still keeping it centrally located.
They're not gonna burn, have materials, gonna be hay, piles, stuff like that's what they use in the burn building. But nevertheless, the smoke and stuff would probably dissipate right down the valley. The other thing is the way it's lays there, you could put a retainment pond very easily right below it, so that any runoff would be called contain it on in the event that something would be a loose or something, so.
So, and, and the kind of the vision, you know, I always try to think, be a little forward thinking in things like this when you're planting things like this in the county. And this is something that the county commission getting behind, and, and, you know, however we go with the property back there is contributing.
however we go with the property back there is contributing to all departments. The department's gonna benefit from this burning facility, this training facility. And doing it at the caliber that the firemen had already kind of pre-planned would be awesome to make it a regional training facility that's gonna bring people into the county and benefit our small businesses and such.
Because right now, they have to go, they have to travel.
Where is the plug?
All the J L.
And so, you know, this, this would lend, I know we do have a lot of MOUs with even the other states that could, you know, come here and utilize the facility. And it puts it on neutral territory for all fire departments. It's not gonna be placed on, you know, land that the Kingwood Fire Department owns or Newburg owns or whatever. It's putting it on county property that is really useless for anything else, but it's perfect for this.
Well, even the fire departments, it's saying something for them that this is the first time they've been talking about this for years and years and years. You know, they came together and said, "Let's pull more money to make this happen" because there is a draft in need.
Yes, yes. And so I really like the fact that we're, you know, looking back at these plans and what some people that were definitely before Commissioner Thomas and myself and probably Commissioner Smith, just, you know, digging this stuff out. The county paid for a master plan, and it might not be exact following it, but we're kind of building and expanding upon the vision and carrying through something that, that a lot of times projects get started and talked about, but we really need to push one across the line.
That would be between six and seven acres approximately. But the thing about it is, there's a tower, one of you guys, but was put in by previous commissioner, I would be putting there. So that thing spans Godwater all over that lower area, which pretty well renders that useless around that area. So this can sit back into the backside of the property and down on that course there. But really, like you said, as far as putting in a nice building or something, it's really not. But it's perfect for the location for the burn building, but really would be something you want to put a business type of...
I like the direction we're heading. What are the next steps?
Well, the next step is just working to see what it actually physically would cost because there will be required to be a little bit of excavation done. And we have some really good working relationships with, you know, some people that can do this to give us an idea of what that would cost to get done. Because we just need to, that's just stuff that we need to know. And, and the fact that they have their money, two-thirds of it secured where it's, they're committing it to it as a county fire association. Really, the next step is to get an updated price quote on the burn facility, get the actual acreage down to what it is, and then decide how the county wants to proceed with. Are we gonna maintain ownership of the land and just lease everything to them for, for a lifetime? You know, whatever, there's a lot of options that we can look at, but we want to make sure we're doing something that is in the best interest of the association and the taxpayers and what the county could see down the road from this, so...
And that to me, if the fire association, several members of the fire departments that were there were all excavation people, so they kind of, you know, looked at the, where the dirt could be moved around and make a nice, lot of work area thing, and said, "We'll definitely do it."
Yep, and, and they were, they were really excited. They said, and I can't remember who I'm quoting, but why wasn't this the piece of land that was offered up, you know, ten years ago or whatever it was?
Well, that, at that time, I was here for that. But it was around the hill, pretty well on the side of the hill that you could really...
But, you know, when someone tells you no, isn't it the next step always backing up and seeing how you can make it work? So, you know, I'm just glad to be able to pull this out of the drawer and get some traction on it and get all of those fire departments to come together to start moving in the right direction. So that's, we'll keep that on there for next week.
A little bit.
All right. All right.
Oh, I'm up.
You are up.
Good morning. I hope everyone is doing well today, and we'll dive right on in. It should be the first item in your packet, which is a request to hire Jeffrey Goodwin for the position of custodian and grounds with the county commission. Mr. Goodwin has spent the last thirty years at Phil's Tire and Auto Repair. You have a draft?
Okay.
Yeah, because that's what Angie told me to give, because we have the original back in the office. Mr. Goodwin has spent the last thirty years at Phil's Tire and Auto Repair, and his start date would be May first. And he would be paid hourly at a rate of thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents per hour and be required to successfully complete the probationary period before and any, any increase in pay would be entertained. This probationary period would last until the thirtieth of June, two thousand twenty four. And at this time, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve the hire of Mr. Jeffrey Goodwin for the position of custodian and grounds. And I have already spoken to Dawn about affixing his stamp to the welcome letter. So once that's approved, we will go forward.
I have various issues.
Okay, I don't either.
I like his dedication and effort when we talk to him. He was an exceptional employee.
Yeah, his references were outstanding, including one of our very own employees, Cecil, said, spoke very highly of him.
Okay, well, I move to approve the hire of Mr. Goodwin for custodian grounds position with the Preston County Commission, effective May first, two thousand twenty four, with a pay rate of thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents per hour, forty hours per week with fringe benefits. Probationary will end June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. It moved and seconded to hire Mr. Goodwin as stated. Commissioner Stone, yes? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Right.
Excellent. The next item in the report is just a quick announcement. On Friday, April nineteenth, the commission will hold a special session for the opening of bids for our courthouse reconfiguration project. This special session will begin at ten fifteen AM as bids are to be received by us no later than ten AM on the nineteenth and will take place in this very area.
So how, how long should that run?
That really will depend. It will depend on the number of bids we have. It will depend on the number of questions you all have about six bids.
So I just, I committed this speaking somewhere at eleven, eleven fifteen, if that's not...
Well, we, we do not anticipate this running. Half an hour should be the maximum amount, so it should be ten forty-five.
And that way we can be prepared.
If, if we are, if we are longer than ten forty-five, what we should at that point is move into the actual meeting on that Tuesday to continue any further discussions which we can.
And we're expecting at least three bids.
Well, we, we are, as it stands right now, and I just spoke with Michael Mills, and they created a drop box of material that had been requested by all three members who attended the mandatory pre-bid workshop, so signs are very good. You never know what's gonna happen until it happens. And signs are very good that we should be getting bids from those who attended. So we're very, very optimistic, which is good. And speaking of things that are good, in terms of facilities, the work on the controls for the chiller as well as the insulation for the chiller are both done. And so that project is wrapped up. And our maintenance team is still hard at work on a number of smaller projects in the sheriff's office, and Tanya and all are all set to begin the process of moving. So yay there. Our facility supervisor and myself have spoken at length with the judge as well as others at the Supreme Court, and we will be applying for a courthouse security funds grant. As such, the first step is to hold a meeting to address the security needs of the courthouse. And this meeting will take place on Wednesday, April sixteenth, at ten AM here in the commission meeting room, and an invitation will be sent out to all county officials later today. This one is, has a very tight timeframe as everything needs to be completed by the end of April. But we have already started working on that, and the vast majority of the application is already submitted. And we have different areas upon which we'll discuss at the meeting of getting the other necessary material moving forward. So to the elected officials, I will say you will get letter requests and stuff from me today. And there are drafts of all that, so I will be as helpful as I can. There are no budget revisions today, but there are a few items of miscellaneous correspondence. Firstly, the assessor's office will be closed from ten AM to noon this Thursday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty four, for training. Again, the assessor's office will be closed this Thursday from the hours of ten AM until noon, but will be operational during all the remaining business hours. And secondly, as you will see in your packet, Glenn LaRue of the Preston County Youth Center is requesting a letter of support from the commission and the youth center's application for congressionally-directed spending from Senator Manchin. Our letter of support mirrors the one from Robbie Baylor of the Preston County Economic Development Authority. And I have already spoken to President Smith about using his signature on the letter of support. Once approved by the commission, and he has granted such authority, therefore, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve the letter of support for the Preston County Youth Center in its bid to receive congressionally-directed spending from Senator Manchin and authorize the county administrator to affix the signature of the president of the commission to said letter.
Okay. Yep, I move to approve the letter and authorize Commissioner President Jones stamp to be affixed to said letter for congressionally-directed spending to benefit the Preston County Youth Center. This letter is addressed to Senator Joe Manchin.
Second.
Right, it moved and seconded. Commissioner Stone, yes? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Go forth, be merry, get a sign, get a sign and get it to him at the deadline today.
Got it, excellent. And as a final note, we will, we received yesterday a letter from the auditor's office saying that our budget has been approved.
Yay!
And at next week's meeting on the sixteenth, by statute, we will be setting the levy rate, and that, those, that paperwork is already ready to go. And I will be receiving that from our bookkeeper either the morning of the meeting or on Monday. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, do you have any good news to spread?
Good news?
Yeah.
I always have, I always have good news. Just a lot of things that we need to pick up on next week. We need to get to work on the advisory board and stuff of that nature, the rent's property, all that. Other than that, I have nothing this week, no additional news. Next week's a few things, but we're considered Tuesday.
Maybe I'll shuffle some of the things that I got going on to you. It has been an extremely crazy busy time. When I ran for county commission in the first go-round, I wasn't actually commissioner. So I had a little bit more time to campaign, and now I'm trying to do all, do my job and attempt to campaign. So it's always interesting. Nonetheless, one of the things I've taken very seriously in my entire tenure, not just for campaign purposes, is trying to educate our youth on the importance of county government. And April is county government month. And so I have been, last week on Friday, oh, I went to Brewston School and spoke to those eighth graders about county government, informing them what all of our county government does, and also what the county commissioner's role is. The essay contest is how does county commissioner make a difference in my life? And so it's very, very cool to see what they think we do. And then to entice them a little bit, the county commissioners association put out this contest for an essay, five hundred words, and they are challenged to do that and enticed with monetary prizes. So this is across the state, but Preston County has had great participation with me going into the schools and actually speaking to these kids about it. And so first place is a five hundred dollar award to the first place kid in the state and the teacher of that first place kid, because the teachers have to submit this stuff to the county commissioners association. The teacher also gets five hundred dollars for supplies for their classroom. And so second place award is a three hundred dollar prize. Third place is three hundred dollar prize, and they do fifty dollar prizes for honorable mentions. And we have had some honorable mentions here in Preston County. I've challenged the schools I've been to so far to rally and see how many we can get. And I've even enticed it a step further that which other school produces first, second, third, or honorable mention. And I hopefully I can get some other people to pitch in on this. I'm gonna do a pizza party. We personally do a pizza party for these kids because they need to understand, they're at a critical age. That's why I'm running about the state of West Virginia and West Virginia studies. And it's just so important. When you think about it and put it in perspective, these kids are like four years away from being a voting citizen of our county. So we've got to start them to understand so that they care and want to be a part of that and helping, going in and then understanding some of what we do is super important. So I went to Brewston, Tidleton, and West Preston last week, and I'll be finishing up this week with the rest of the middle schools in the county. So I just encourage you, if you know anybody that has an eighth grade student, encourage them to do this because it is important stuff. And I think that's all that I have for today. Next week will be busy, so tune in and get engaged and understand that we are doing great things. All right, anything else? Anybody? All right, we have no budget revisions, so this meeting is adjourned.